Is that gonna still go on with all this going on?
It just depends on how things progress. We'll, we'll be monitoring and see. But probably like I said, we, that's two weeks away. We'll just have to see.
Right. Okay, I was just curious about that too, sir. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board on these reports?
For the personnel report? We do have two retirees. Both in the cafeteria, Judy Martinez and Anna Estrada, both with about twenty-two years of service.
Okay, wow. Are you gonna order them a plaque or something, Dr. Lucas?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have them ordered. Our New Mexico School Boards Association is in as well, but it's just a matter of being able to present it.
Okay.
Recommendation we did back what in March or whenever that was.
Yes, sir.
That plaque was in there.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Lucas from the board?
No, sir.
Okay, if not, we'll move on. Public Forum and A Board of Education Issues and A. Number seven, Dr. Lucas, approval of accounts payable and payroll liability transactions. Any questions from the board to Dr. Lucas?
This is Suzie. I have just one. It was on two six zero four zero. Wasn't a large amount, but I just didn't.
Yeah, it was for maintenance, open P O. It was an open P O for maintenance.
Okay.
And a job. It's a Hjoka, Ahoka?
Yes.
Corporation? I'm not sure how to say that. Ahoka? But it's for a hundred sixteen dollars is open P O for maintenance that we had.
Okay.
And I would have to get with Barb to get more information on that, because this is not a.
I'm looking right now just so I can see. What was the date of the check?
It was.
Five seven?
Yeah, five seven.
It's just a new one that I'd never seen before, so I thought.
Any other questions or comments for, uh, Dr. Lucas? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve accounts payable and payroll liability transactions as written for tonight.
This is Suzie. I'll make that motion for this item.
Alyssa, I'll second that motion.
Motion by Ms. Cole, second by Mrs. Kiver. Mr. Barrera? Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Kiver?
Aye.
Morelos, aye. Motion carries. Item B, Dr. Lucas, approval of budget adjustment requests.
Right, and these are really not for approval. They're the ones that were done from the mass approval that had to be in by the first. So they're not really, you know, they've been approved. And if you look, there's no really, all it is is moving monies from one fund. For example, let me find the first one here. Like on the first one, it's for, uh, say Title One compensation. The present budget was thirteen thousand, six hundred. We reduced it by four thousand and made that ninety-five hundred. And then that four thousand, you can see down at the bottom of that was added into software. So it's back to four thousand. So that's all it was, was moving monies to back, match our, our budget.
Any questions or comments from the board to Dr. Lucas or Ryan?
No, sir.
So we don't need to, uh, approve these, right? Okay.
We don't have to approve these.
Okay, thank you, sir. Number eight, discussion items. Discussion of start of, uh, next school year.
Right, and, uh, we're still, we're, we're still looking at three different scenarios, basically, you know, a full start with social distancing.
Right.
Trying to figure out how that would work, especially at high school, that would be very difficult. Changing classes, keeping small class size, you know, it'd be very hard at the high school. Looking at a hybrid model where maybe they alternate days coming in, you know, one day would be in school, next day would be online. And then we're looking at a full online version. We're still waiting on guidance from PED. Last superintendent's meeting last week, they said they should have some guidance to us by this week. So hopefully, we will know something, what direction PED wants us to go. But as of now, we have no idea.
Dr. Lucas, if you get something in black and white, could you send it to all of us so we can be aware of what's going on?
Yeah, and even if it's not, uh, even if he just says it at the superintendent's meeting on Thursday, I'll let y'all know.
Would you please? Thank you. So we can be, you know, a little heads up on what's, what might happen.
There, he's saying for sure, teachers and staff would probably, you know, like when we buy our P P E and stuff, the teachers and staff would be en masse. They're still not sure on students. So, um, that's really about as much as they've given us so far.
Yeah, okay. Any questions or comments for Dr. Lucas from the board?
This is Alyssa. Um, I just had a question. Um, are we gonna have our principals, um, drop like, draw like a plan up? And see if PED approves that or?
No, it's not, uh, I don't, PED will have us probably do a written plan. They may or may not. They did for the ending of school, we had to come up with a written plan. And if they do that, then yes, but otherwise, we'll just have our own written plan that'll be ours. You know, it won't necessarily, it just depends on what PED says.
Okay.
If they want a written plan, we'll submit one. If they don't, we'll come up with our own written plan and it'll be in district.
All right, hopefully it'll be pretty soon, you know, so we can start planning and having parents, you know,
Yes, ma'am.
A little peace of the mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Good point. Good point, Mrs. Kiver. Any other questions or comments?
This is Suzie. I do, um, I know when they did this online for the kids, this last go around it with short notice, and we did the best that we could. Will they have different guidelines as far as online, um, stricter rules?
Yes, and well, so, because that's what, one thing they're working on is like, if we have to do an online, how are we gonna count attendance for that student? How are we gonna? So we would go probably more toward trying to do maybe a traditional setting online, you know, having the classes. Our new math adoption that we adopted has an online section, so math should be much easier to, to work with. Other subjects, maybe not so much, but math, um, definitely has a, has a a strong online component to it. And we should be getting those materials in, in July. But other than that, yeah, it's.
Yeah, because I know, you know, there was some kids that worked diligently on their work and turned it in, and then there was some that just turned in one or two assignments and they got the same.
If, if it goes online next year, it will be, I mean, because we were told by PED at the end of the year, just try to maintain, you know, you kind of come up with your own for grading, but we don't want basically students to fail. I mean, this would be more like, it would be treated more like regular school. So if it's online, they're gonna have the grades, everything will count.
Turning in the homework and the whole thing, probably, right? Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Again, the thing on my behalf is just keep us informed of what's going on.
Yes, sir.
That PED sends you, send it to us so we can be aware of what's going on. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item B, status of drug testing policy revision.
Right, we've, um, talked about revising policy and we've talked about waiting until, you know, we can meet back in person so the public could be there for input. I don't know when that will be, but we did have a coaches meeting. We met with the coaches or the head coaches to go over the current policy and the changes and everybody was okay with what we've done so far with taking out, um, recall our current policy says eight testings once a month. It's just gonna say like ten testings and not necessarily once a month. It may be two in a month. One would have no testing, you know, it just depends, it would be truly random. And then it goes to a saliva test. It strengthens up the privacy part and then, uh, the primary, um, testing method would be saliva. So, um, once I get back from the attorney, the corrections that we needed on that policy, I'll get a copy of it. But it is, and that is something, do you all want? Because school's gonna be starting soon. We don't know whether there's gonna even be what kind of the athletic program will look like.
Right.
So I don't know if we want to postpone it until we can meet in person to make any changes, or if you want me to submit it. You know, because people can always email with questions that they would like, you know, for the policy to be discussed online. Although it's not as convenient as having an in-person meeting.
This is Morelos. How does the board feel about that? What do you think? Any comments?
That's a, that's a tough one. Um, I know parents are gonna want their input because that.
Yeah.
So right now, I mean, we can leave it as it stands until we come back or we can figure out a way. Because I know they have a, a way for input on this. It's not verbal, but there's a way they can email us, you know, like they see something on the agenda, they can email me questions that can be brought up under the public issues or there should be a chat. Vicky, do you know, is there a chat function? That we could implement that would let people, like if it's an option that where they want public input on?
Yes, so we can do that either via YouTube, the streaming, um, side, or if you wanted to open up a Zoom meeting. We run the two in order to keep the board, um, to keep you guys in control of the meeting. Um, and ensure safety and none of the Zoom bombings that have been known to happen. But there's, so there's chat in the live, um, video streaming and there's also a way that we could have people register ahead of time or, um, something like that, and they could use the chat box in Zoom. So there's two options.
Okay.
That sounds good to me. I, I truly believe like Ms. Cole said, that the parents want to have some input in this, so it's opening it up to them one way or another. I don't know.
Probably the most fluid method would be through chat on YouTube.
Okay.
It's something they're, they're used to doing. We've, we have like eight to ten people every meeting watching on YouTube, so.
Well, yeah, like I said, we need to give the, the, the parents or the public in, uh, time for input, see what they think about this. Transferring about all.
Because the July, the next board meeting is the last time before school starts.
Right.
To change the policy before school starts, if we're gonna change it.
Let's try it then, Dr. Lucas, for the July meeting, so that we can, if the people want to have input, so they can have their input and see what can go from there. How does the board feel about that?
Um, this is Esquivel. Um, um, so you're gonna send us whatever changes the coaches wanted and then we review it. Um, how is the parent's gonna view it, or are we gonna just discuss?
Well, I guess we can have, uh, you know, they can contact the office or send us the email and then we can email them an attachment with it in.
Okay.
I mean, because we can do it via email, just send them an attachment.
I, I, you know, me personally, I'd rather review it before even passing anything and making sure, um, we all feel comfortable with the changes.
Right. And y'all have, for the most part, the revised copy. I gave that to y'all a couple of months ago.
Yes, yes, we still have that.
And there, there's not really, there's only really the only thing that has to be changed on that. There was a couple of mistakes we found that we wanted to correct. But for the most part, the coaches didn't have any, they're gonna, their biggest thing was getting the athletic policy to match the drug policy, and they're working on that as well, so that should be in place by the time school starts.
Okay.
As long as everything matches.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, exactly. Good points, people. Uh, again, any other questions or comments before we move forward?
No, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Thank you, board. Uh, why, uh, item C, S W R E C overview?
And that is on Vicky. Are you ready, Vicky?
I will be. Give me one second to get this from the beginning. Um, can you tell me what you're seeing on your screen? Because, um, once I shared my screen, I lost what you guys are seeing.
Uh, Driven for Your Success, it's a slide and has Vicky Chavez, Executive Director.
Okay, and do you guys see your, okay, so you guys see all the logo on the, um, on the, let's see, let me share, make sure this is what you're seeing. All right, well, no, that's the one I wanted you to see. Let's see, okay. All right, so thank you, um, first of all, for your time and thank you, Dr. Lucas, for inviting me and um, I just have a quiz, a pop quiz. Do you guys know what R E C stands for? Do you know who we are? You'll have to speak because I can't see you guys.
Southwest Regional Education Cooperative. This is Morelos.
So, you know, a lot of people don't know who we are or what we do or, um, and so I appreciate Dr. Lucas inviting me because your, your district is a member of the Regional Education Cooperative. And as you can see from this slide, there are actually eight districts in the Southwest region that we provide different supports for, and those are the districts that we support, Lordsburg being one of them. So Regional Education Cooperative were originally established legislatively in nineteen seventy-eight. I'll give you a little bit of a history and then we'll talk about what we do with you all today. There are ten regional education cooperatives throughout the state. And, um, the idea is that we are, we are a government agency, we're administratively attached to the Public Education Department. However, we are controlled locally via the, uh, member district superintendent, sit on our council and provide oversight and, and direction. Um, and then why do we exist? The whole purpose of regional education cooperatives was to ensure that especially our small rural districts would have equitable access to programs, to related services. And the idea, um, the focus initially, back when they were established in nineteen seventy-eight, were related to students with disabilities and also pulling together small districts to do consortias for Perkins applications and, um, C T E projects and things like that. And so that we've grown over the years to expand services and provide, uh, various educational programming in response to the local need. So it is very much driven by the local superintendents and the local district needs that, um, are are identified. And so just to give you an idea of where the ten regional education cooperatives are located, um, we have, we have, um, R E C one, two, three, four is here. Five is all the pink that you see, the solid pink. These are their member districts, the solid colors. Six is on the east side as well as seven, eight, nine is kind of central in the south, and then ten, that is us, and we serve these areas. But the diagonal lines that you see are not member districts, they're larger districts that tend to have, um, more resources because their funding is much greater. And so, um, but they are districts that we support in different capacities, depending on if there's a state initiative that we're rolling out or that sort of thing. Um, for our area, we have twelve thousand, six hundred fifteen students with almost twenty percent students with disabilities, that's what S W D is, and thirteen and a half percent that are English language learners. And we, we serve, as we know in our state, and you all know in your district, a high poverty, um, rate, uh, have a high poverty rate in our area at almost sixty-eight percent. Stop me at any time if you have questions. Um, our particular office, uh, training office is in, is in Demming. We also have, uh, two people up in Silver City, I'm sorry, up in Truth or Consequences who do business, our business services, um, in our office. And so our particular governance is the council. Those are our superintendents, as I said before. And then it's myself, um, they hire, fire the executive director, um, and help guide us through strategic planning and feedback, uh, around the programs that we should be offering. And so this is just a, a probably a small list, um, tried to summarize the services that we provide in each of the, um, areas. We provide instructional programming, business services, technology services, as well as supporting operations around event facilitation, that sort of thing. Oops, I'm sorry, went too fast. So the big question that I'm always asked is, so how are you funded? Um, we only receive an allocation of a hundred, three thousand dollars annually. And then we also receive some special education money for six of our eight districts. Lordsburg, we do receive money. Um, it's about sixty thousand dollars. Hmm, Lordsburg may not be quite that high. It might be more like fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, but each of the districts generates, um, state-directed money and the whole purpose is to provide special education support um, for students with disabilities. So it might be, um, professional development, it might be legal compliance, that sort of thing. We also have, um, member, uh, two member districts that pay a membership fee because they don't generate special ed dollars. And then we do entrepreneurial activities inside our region as well as outside of our region where people pay a fee for services. So we piece all the different pieces together to ensure that we can provide the support that are needed in the region. So we provide four, we have, um, fourteen full-time employees, two part-time instructional coaches. And, um, we're educators, we've been school administrators, not all of us, but there's two of us that have extensive school administration experience. We advocate at the legislative level. We have four licensed business managers on staff, two certified purchasing officers. We have Medicaid in the school specialists as well as a technology manager. We have endorsements in English as a Second Language, Special Education, and experience providing executive coaching and, and instructional coaching. So what do we do? I'm gonna skip over this one because I kind of shared with you, um, the pieces that we do before, um, in a, in a previous slide. So what do we do specifically for Lordsburg? Um, this year, we provided quite a bit of new teacher mentoring support, and Dr. Lucas, feel free to jump in anytime if I've missed something or there's something we need to highlight. Um, we also did, uh, some training and support with students with disabilities. Uh, we supported your special ed director, some of your teachers, if, uh, you had a new special ed teacher that needed some, um, there was some support just needed. When you're brand new, you've got all this legal compliance and, and you're trying to teach. Um, just having a instructional coach that came either every week or every other week to provide that support is incredibly beneficial to your teachers. And then, um, for professional development, in Demming, we offered seventy sessions. Those are free of charge to our member districts. And, um, uh, many of those are special ed-related. Many are not. Um, a lot of them are, are, we teach a lot around, um, literacy. How do you teach kids to read? How do you use the iStation data to, um, readjust your instruction? Um, we did vocabulary training at the secondary and the elementary level. There were some, um, processes and routines that were taught. We've come onsite for P D and just overall, you've had sixty-five staff members come and participate in Demming at, um, at one or more trainings throughout last fiscal, this, this fiscal year. So they've been very, your, your district's been very engaged and, and it's been, um, we've built some really strong relationships and have some really great, um, we've had some great experiences working. Uh, in the past, we've also done, uh, leadership training. We worked with some of your new principals a few years ago, mentoring and supporting them, uh, working with them on observation and feedback, uh, helping your teachers and your, um, your administrators develop assessments and kind of some short cycle assessments, how to look at that information, how to align your curriculum with the standards, and then supporting them through that P L C process. So we try and be very innovative and flexible, um, to support the districts in their specific needs. Dr. Lucas, would you add anything to that? Have I missed anything on the, what we're currently doing?
No, just we, we utilize them a lot. I mean, they provide our beginning of the year in service. They did it last year. They'll do it again this year. We've already got them booked for.
And you, you don't have it on your slide, Vicky, but you, you guys helped me with the Medicaid claiming also.
Yeah.
You're right. So one of the, I mean, one of the, and that's over here in our fiscal management. We, we do what, a, a few of the things we do to generate revenue is we do, um, business management services and we also do, um, Medicaid, and that's exactly right. Really working to maximize, working hand in hand with business managers to ensure that we're maximizing revenue, the Medicaid revenue for, for, um, districts. And so we've seen an increase actually in Lordsburg from last year to this year in your, your Medicaid revenue. So, um, that takes a strong partnership to, to make that happen and lots of really tight communication. So I always leave, I'm, I'm towards the end of this, but, um, I think the most important thing that I like to, um, when I connect, get the opportunity to connect with boards is ask you to help us advocate. Um, we are, we've been around since seventy-eight, but a lot of people still don't really know what we do or who we are and, um, our, our, any time you have the opportunity to support legislation or to advocate for legislation, we would appreciate your support in that area. Um, thinking of us as your strategic partner, uh, one of the things, we have a great relationship, uh, with your district and have a great relationship with Dr. Lucas and, uh, your principals. And they pick up the phone and call us. We just want them to be encouraged to continue to think of us as your strategic partner. Like, if we're not offering it now, could we do it in the future? Is it something we could adapt and, and build? Because we build a lot of what we do, um, around, um, uh, needs that are identified. Um, and one final area that has, has been a huge, um, was a huge undertaking about two years ago, um, was something though is how, known as House Bill one eleven. It has now been, um, chaptered. It, it, it cleared all the committees. We got it through all the, um, both sides of the, of the legislation, legislation, legislator houses, and the governor signed it. Um, and that was in direct relationship to, or direct response really from the Yasi Martinez lawsuit. And the focus is on ensuring that our rural districts and our rural staff have access to professional development that supports culturally and linguistically diverse students. And, um, we've worked really hard, we worked really hard to, um, champion this and say your R E Cs are geographically located to make this happen and to ensure there's equity in all the districts and there's consistency in, um, pedagogy and in, um, instructional practices. And so, um, we're gonna continue, we do not have money tied to this. It's, even though it's law, there is not money tied to this yet. So we're gonna continue to advocate to get the, that funding into the R E Cs to support our, our regional, um, our regional, our rural schools and our regional cooperatives. And so, um, as you hear about this or you see more and you have an opportunity to support us and advocate for this, we would really appreciate it. So with that, I'll stand for questions, um, or comments and just thank you again for allowing us to, um, share with you a little bit of what we do.
This is, this is Morelos. Uh, Ms. Chavez, thank you for all your help and support. I, I truly appreciate you. And I know Dr. Lucas and all the other board members do too, so thank you so much on my behalf. And of course, I'm sure the board wants to thank you too. If there's any more comments and statements for her, go ahead.
This is Suzie. I just want to add, um, I really appreciate the fact that you guys do have this program. And, um, I was able to participate in one of the um, trainings that you had there in Demming. It was for the, for the staff, but you included parents who were able to attend. And it was, um, autism-related?
Yes.
And I just found it. And I just found it phenomenal, and it helped answer questions for parents. Or to have input in what the kids are being taught, or how they're being, um, how they're working with them within the school. And it gave them a chance to give input, so I really think it's really great that you're doing that, and that you do include the parents.
Thank you.
Because a lot of people don't realize that parents can, and I know there's limited slots for them. But I think it was still a couple of places that some parents could have gone, and I think as we educate them and let them know that these services are available, that more people will attend. So, thanks for your willingness.
Any other comments? Again, Ms. Chavez, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Yes. Uh, for the record, uh, Edgar did text me that he could not make, uh, tonight's meeting because he's got two employees that are tested positive, and he had to cover both, uh. Shifts this morning and tonight, and so he's really busy, so he, he, he did call in, okay, just for the record, that that's why he didn't make it. Uh, any other questions or comments from the board? On my behalf, take care, be safe, God bless all of you. And with all, uh, business taken care of, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, have a good night.
Hey Suzie.
Hi.
I just, so I found the invoice for that one, uh, it's Keenan.